So next year, this time we should all share stuff. Oh, are we live on Facebook?
We're pretty much. It probably pops up for you first. Alrighty, it's that time and we're starting off at four o'clock. Holy cow.
No way Val, we're on time today?
Well, it's the new year, so one of Valerie's goals is to be on time more often.
Awesome. So Val, tell everybody what we're doing today.
So welcome everyone. So we're excited today to have Scott Newton, our new city council member. So yay for that. And then we have some new seats, a little bit of movement within the Pismo Chamber Board of Directors. And we have some new directors that we're also excited to introduce you all to. So without further ado, Lisa, unless there's anything else, we can jump right into it, right?
Yes, I think we can. We just want to wish everybody a happy new year and hopefully 2021 will be the best to come. So.
Right?
Yes.
Get any worse, I don't think. Be careful what I say. I know.
Yeah.
But yes.
So Scott, before you start telling us about Pismo and what you're going to do with Pismo, we want to know about Scott Newton.
Well, that's a pretty boring story. You know, I've been in Shell Beach, same house here for 10 years, came from the valley. Pretty much came from a farming family, peach plum nectarine, and my family still continues to farm. Myself, I'm in the self-storage business. My background before that was pretty much all e-commerce. And you know, you're a pretty old person when you're one of the first 1,000 e-commerce stores that ever go online. And so that's kind of what gave us our initial big experience in life because you had to learn marketing, you had to learn technology. And that business did very well for us, got very large, became a pretty decent sized employer. And saw that writing on the wall with all the corporations wanting to have a piece of us and we sold it off. And sold it off and moved to Shell Beach, probably within a 10 day period.
Wow.
I mean, we packed up literally overnight and moved here and I don't see us moving anywhere else from here ever.
I don't blame you.
Yeah. It definitely is Pismo dice, isn't it?
It, I'm just glad more people aren't aware of the jewel that we really have here.
So tell us how the city council became something that you were interested in.
Well, you know, the city, running for city council was kind of one of those things where I never wanted to run for city council. In all honesty, I would love somebody else to do it and be able to sit at home and enjoy.
Too late now. No going back.
But you know, at some point, if you don't see things going the way you want, you can either keep complaining to yourself about it or you step up. And you always think what, there's things that you want done differently. And sometimes you have to test the waters and see if that really resonates with anybody else. And fortunately, or unfortunately for me, that worked out. And so, you know, the big problem right now is with COVID is unfortunately, it's hard being on city council to still have efficient dialogue with everybody. And unfortunately, the situation's gotten even worse. So it's even, as I say, more frowned upon, knocking on doors and going door to door. But what's really difficult for me right now is, you know, we set our goals for the city in February. It's a two years worth of goals. Do you know what it's like to be in my position and try to think, what do all of you want? Without being able to meet with everybody and you know, only so many people are aware of our website or even aware of what we're doing.
Right, or the Pismo Voice, right?
Yeah, so I mean, there's a few, we got about 100 people that responded.
Really? That was it?
Really?
Of what they would like to see in our city. So it's kind, I mean, the reality is if you want to see something in your city, you can't be disappointed unless you raise your voice.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
So I would still say, even though they've closed Pismo Voice for this, if you still have things that you want to see addressed in it, it's not too late to still, you know, email or contact council people.
Okay, that's good to know.
That is good, good advice. Yes. So if anybody watching this, if there's something that they would like to see Pismo do besides parking and besides the dunes opening, which Pismo doesn't have anything to do with that, you should let our city council know. So yeah.
Be perfect.
Yeah. So, but I want to know more about Scott. So you're married, you have kids, where'd you come from besides the valley? Where in the valley?
Came from the big town of Kingsburg and married forever, four kids. Don't think I'll ever have a house that's empty, you know? Once about a time, our kids used to do things like sports and all that good stuff. And we're one of those crazy sports families. And you know, right now, I think we're like all families, we're just waiting for normal, right? We want our kids back in school, we want them back to doing sports. And we, I always say, I just want to see our kids be normal again. It's like we're in a weird funk right now. And you know what? It's not fun for them, it's not fun for us. You know, their, their new life is behind a computer more and which is the opposite of what I want them to do in life in general, right? I mean, look where we live. I want it out the beach more, I want it outside more. But yet we're pushing them more and more to be inside, right? My, my youngest kid's PE class is kind of comical. He's in front of his computer and he's supposed to be doing pushups. He's already learned, if you're out of sight, you're doing pushups. I won't tell you if he is or not doing them, but.
Yeah, that's pretty funny.
Beyond that, I mean, I'm not gonna lie, my life's rather boring. I mean, I'm kind of a workaholic and I mean, if it's not family, it's work. And we're in the old cars as a family, you know? Two of my kids have classic cars, I have a classic car.
What do you have?
We're nerds in that way, you know?
What, what kind of classic car do you have?
So my youngest daughter, myself, each own old Ford Broncos.
Oh, awesome.
And then my, and my youngest son has a 55 Chevy big window truck.
Nice. You guys got to be in our Santa Express next year.
Maybe so. I don't know if I can compete with your ride you had this year, though.
Hey, that's all Shelley.
That's all my husband. Yeah.
Yeah, Broncos are cool too, though. But you, you, you like getting outdoors and I gathered that, you know, you said something about, you know, jogging or.
Yeah, I mean, my, my background is, you know, running and running kind of a stupid amount. But you know, the one thing that it brings to the position of city council is, you know, as I said earlier, we only got 100 responses from people, right?
I can't believe that, really. I just.
Yeah, so it puts the pressure on us to be, if you're not out in the community, then you, you're right now, you're almost forced to be, right? So my goal is to be all around the city all the time, trying to be aware of the problems because you know, if, if we're not aware of the problems, people are human, they're going to complain about them, but they're going to complain themselves about, about it to themselves and to their neighbors.
Right.
They're not necessarily going to send an email to the city and say, I've got a problem here, can you address it, right?
I guess my question would be, how do they get that out? I mean, I saw it on their, on their social media. I'm assuming it's on their website, but is there a mailer that goes out to people?
So it was done on the water bills as well.
Okay.
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 It's a tough world right now. I mean, in my, if I had my perfect way, we didn't have COVID, we would have these huge community talks on each, you know, each maybe like five of them throughout the city. And everybody comes and just kind of states what's on their mind. That would be a.
Well, we've talked about doing something like that with, you know, with even city council.
Correct.
You know, just even the, the chamber and city council doing something because, you know, I mean, if, if you've got a united front and there's more people, you know, with more input and more feedback, I think that, that works to everybody's benefit.
Indeed.
Correct. So definitely need as much involvement as we can. The more the public's involved, the more they're going to see what they actually want. Because it's not, it's not, you know, city council isn't about what I want in our city. It really is what everybody who lives here wants. So sometimes I even have to tell myself, you know what, I would like to see this, but I know, I maybe I'm in such a small minority that it really isn't a priority for everybody else. So I put that on the back burner and what is, what does everybody else want to see?
So there would be a component that would relate to the business community within the voice. I mean, the business community has a voice.
Definitely. And you know, think about this, I mean, you know, we, I would love to see, and unfortunately, like we said with COVID, it makes this difficult, but I mean, my, we're all sitting down as a group in person with the business leaders, business owners, and we're having conversations about the challenges that you're having and what you would like us to do differently at the city.
Well, we've had downtown meetings and, and I know Jim just mentioned that to Lisa and we're going to see if we can't facilitate one where there is a downtown meeting where we ask the business community to participate. And even if it seems like a gripe session, at least the conversation is open, it's opening up the door. And everybody feels comfortable chiming in and, you know, not hesitating as far as what they want to say. Because I think, I think the calls that we, we do monthly are great, but I also know our business community very well and I know there's hesitance sometimes, depending on what they're saying or who's present. And so we just want to make sure it's a comfortable environment for everybody and that they feel comfortable voicing what they want to voice and that there's no repercussions on that.
Right.
And you also need, you know, the business owners and everybody that lives here to feel comfortable, you know, also talking to their council people.
Right. That's what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yep.
So. But we, I mean, the chamber, I think, can assist with the efforts, especially as it relates directly to the business community. And reach out and see what we can do because we're going to be actually sending a survey out here shortly to kind of survey 2020 and what the business community wants more of, or, you know, what did we do, do good, what did we not? City council will be noted on there, you know, Jim's monthly meetings will be noted on there. How we acted and responded to different things that came to the table. All of those kinds of things because that's going to tell us whether we're doing a good job and what we need to work on. And, and continuing to build that relationship with the city and making sure that we're doing everything we can to assist both sides. So.
And then once we have that, then we're going to have our town hall, our downtown meeting.
Right. That sounds lovely.
Yeah. 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 We'll let you know when it happens. If you want to wear a disguise and come and listen.
So, but you've been involved now for, for, I don't know, I want to say at least a month or so. So how's all that going for you? Are you going crazy yet?
So I will tell you this, you know, my, my goal would be to see us with a city council that kind of represents the entire city age-wise, you know? We had maybe someone on there that's in their 30s, some in their 40s, I'm the 50-year-old. But I'm not going to lie to you, it's very difficult. If you're not self-employed or have a very flexible employer, the amount of hours it takes to get ramped up and up to speed in the beginning. You know, I spent Christmas break basically going on tours with city staff of every department. Because the last thing you want to do is be in a city council meeting and not know what they're talking about, right? So the, the amount of time it takes to get the full learning curve done, I mean, it's a lot of time and I, I don't know how we address that. Because like I said, I would love to see more diversity on our city council that represents our entire city. And it really shouldn't be a city council of people that are, let's just say, all self-employed, right? Because I mean, between, you have your regular meetings, which honestly is the least time, least amount of time that's committed. It's all the time behind that, right?
Right. The research I'm sure of, of any issues that come up or.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll tell you, my first week was probably 30 to 40 hours. The next week was probably another 30. I mean, I, I actually thought it was going to be like eight hours a week. And I was warned to plan on 16.
Surprise.
But then again, it depends, I think, how invested you are, right? You know, I mean, I give you an example, I've gone a couple of years of the chambers, you know, beach cleanups. And let me tell you, not just the cleanup helps, it is the fact being out there. And then, you know, we have Mike Cott out there who's waking me up to a lot of things. He's showing me the benches. He's like, hey, look at our benches out here that are getting destroyed by the skaters. Well, guess what? If you're not out there, you don't see that.
That's right.
Right? So we have to, as a council, kind of be all over the city, right? The more involved you are, hopefully the more problems you can avert from ever happening.
Yep.
I agree with that, Scott, because if, if you're not downtown or if you're not out and about Shell Beach or, or anywhere or Price Street, you're not going to know what the issues are. So I thank you for coming to our beach cleanup.
Mentioned that it makes the difference when the business community sees city council out and coming into the business and walking through town, you know, we, we're the ones that hear feedback, you know, when things are happening. And while, you know, they don't even come down here and we never see them and, you know, so it's kind of like the, having a face, and that was one of the things I think that we heard immediately about you was, you know, your, your name. It was just throughout the business community, this, that small businesses know that you were going around, you were talking to people. Now, here's the thing, though, it's, it's one thing to, to get in there and be doing it in the initial stages of it, but it's, it's, that's a whole different thing when it comes to continuing those efforts. So that's where I think we, as a business community, will sit back and watch things and say, okay, but is this really going to be different? Because I think people get complacent and they just kind of continue and then they go along with everybody else. And, and a lot of what you're saying is having diversity in there, I think, is, is big. And, and I think shaking things up makes a difference too. So it just gives someone else, it gives them all a different perspective, I think, on a lot of things. And I think we all need that. We don't. And within our own chamber, Lisa and I don't always see eye to eye. We don't always get along and agree on the same things. You know, but that's what makes a good board and, and you have to have that, you know, you have to have all different sides and opinions. So. So good for you, though, for recognizing that and stepping up. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's been a joy to work with you so far. So, and I look forward to many more years of it.
I appreciate it.
So is there anything right now that's kind of like the hot topic there, other than what's happening with COVID? And, you know, I know that we're still having a difficult time with, you know, the restaurants and the recent order and but you know.
Numbers.
But right, and the numbers are continuing to climb and so any feedback on that?
I mean, our, you know, honestly, our biggest thing coming up was, I mean, we, we have to kind of discount the dunes, right? We have to discount COVID, unfortunately. I mean, because those are things we have no control over. I mean, the biggest thing coming up really is our goal setting and making sure we set the right priorities. You know, so I went door to door twice during my campaign. And my plan on going out and doing another round as soon as we can safely. And because it's one thing before, because when you're running, you, you can't do anything. You're just saying, this is my message, right? But now it's time to go back around and say, okay, now what do you want to see? But, you know, part of it's going to be too late because with COVID and our goal setting being too close to happening at the same time, it's going to really limit us. In my perfect world, my phone would be ringing off the hook and my emails would be stacked and everybody would be saying, this is what I want to see in Pismo.
Okay. My emails.
That email address.
I will put his, we'll put Scott's Facebook link in the feed here too. So like, you know, Scott's saying right here, right now, you know, they're looking for feedback and direction. And he'd be happy to, to hear what anything, anybody out there has to say. Including us and our business community, which will make sure that this gets out there to them too, because now's the time. So.
Right.
There's some ways that we can, I think, push some information out also.
That'd be great.
So.
I really enjoy your posts on Facebook. The community, I think, is really enjoying those and you're out and about and sharing things that you're seeing and the scenery and events. I think that really is going far to, to kind of get you out there to the community too.
And I think that, you know, we can, we can host something like this, you know, a Zoom, maybe after hours and maybe yourself and one other city council member at least and just ask community to get on and the business community and whoever wants to get on and, and have a discussion, you know, there's nothing keeping us from, from assisting with those efforts. So keep us in mind. We're, we're happy to do it. Okay, so anything else in closing? Are you, are you getting sleep?
You know what? I mean, it's, it's funny, you find out real quickly everyone's hours because I have people that email me at two in the morning. And, you know, I'm, I'm like early to bed and early to rise, right? But, you know, I get emails all the time, all the night. I just wonder, what are the, what are these people, are they ever asleep or are they maybe watching?
Bothering you?
They might be with Shelley watching her show. What was it?
Is it Mike? Well, and I think everybody's schedules completely got out of whack with COVID, you know, so. I think that has a lot to do with it. Everybody's schedules are just like all over the place now. So you work when you want to work and then you, you got to deal with kids and families at home now. And so it's just, everything's upside down.
Trying to make sure your dog's not barking during your Zoom meetings and.
Well, yeah, then there's that. So. So anybody here have any questions before we move on for Scott, I guess?
We don't have any on Facebook as of yet.
Okay. So, well, hey, no complaints either. That's pretty good, Scott.
Keep that going.
All right. So next up, we're going to introduce, well, I'll have him introduce himself, Mike Frey. Hello and welcome.
Howdy.
Howdy.
Welcome to the board, Mike.
We like your apron. Mike's, Mike's going to talk and then move on to, to go making his dinner, his filet mignons, right?
Yeah, I gotta, I'm, I'm in charge of barbecuing tonight. So I gotta be ready to spring into action here pretty quick.
And so if you want to introduce yourself and the businesses that you represent?
Sure. I'm Mike Frey and I'm the managing partner at the Pismo Beach Hotel and Harry's nightclub and beach bar and more recently, Harry's Corral.
Yeah, right.
When, when it's open.
When it counts.
Right now. But we've, we've been involved, my family and I have been involved with the Pismo Beach Hotel since 2004. And we became involved with Harry's in 2014. So we're coming up on seven years here with the areas under our belt.
Nice. And so we've been working on, Mike has pretty much participated in a lot of, a lot of meetings, behind the scenes kind of thing. And I would say it's at least been for the last couple of years. And I've probably been trying to twist his arm for the last couple of years to become a director. And this past year, you know, it was just, it was something that just was an easy transition because it was almost like he was on the board because I would have conversations and, you know, and then it was kind of like, then Mike and I would have side conversations. And he would always either be bringing up the same topic or be in the know of what's happening. And I'm like, this, this guy just needs to be on the board already. So, so happy that you were willing to finally make that jump because the whole board here had, you know, and I was getting hounded constantly. Well, how come Mike's not a, a director yet? And I'm like, I'm working on it, I'm working on it. So.
Well, thank you. That's very, that's very kind of you to say, but you know, frankly, you know, just having a chamber board and, and to some extent, city officials that are willing to listen to some of the issues and have, and have that dialogue and have some, you know, some really thoughtful engagement has been beneficial. And, and, you know, we've been looking for that for a long time. And frankly, I think that the reason why I've been, you know, a little more prominent here in the last couple of years is because we've got some, some great people in all the right places that have been willing to listen, have those conversations and, and, you know, see what we can do about some of these issues.
And so how is business faring? I know, I know when things started in March, you know, you pretty much, you were the only one, I think, that shut the hotel down completely. Obviously, Harry's got shut down pretty quick. I was there the last day Harry's was open.
19th, yeah.
Yep, we were there. And so it's, I know it's been tough, especially on the staff and, and, you know, all of that. So how are, how have you been dealing with all of that?
Right. Well, with, with the hotel, we reopened the hotel around the first of June. And it was going, you know, just like gangbusters all the way through summer and even, even beyond summer. Because, because of when the school year started, I think, it had something to do with the, the lack of in-person school in, in most places. It really just kind of made every weekend like, like the third weekend of August, really. It was, we were just, just on extended time. So that was really good for the hotel to help, help the hotel catch up a bit and the weather was cooperative. And somewhere along the way, we got permission to open, you know, Harry's as an outdoor venue. And we had the space to do it right there on the, the grounds of the Pismo Beach Hotel next door. And so, and so we, we did, we opened Harry's Corral on the, on the lawn there at the hotel. And that, that worked very well also while, while the weather was good. But, you know, despite the, the governor's orders to, you know, close up the outdoor venues, we were probably going to have to do that anyway, just because it was cold December and January are not strong travel months. You know, with the, with the possible exception of the week between Christmas and New Year's, that, that kind of picked up again. But we're just kind of waiting for the weather to get good and, and hopefully the, the state will see in its infinite wisdom that we need to open these outdoor venues at least and get us headed towards some kind of indoor capacity as well.
And I know Harry's, we always get the question and, I mean, I was, I was wearing one of my Harry sweaters just recently and somebody walked up and said, you know, I don't, you know, will they ever open again? And, and I know on your social media, you're always getting people like, you know, is, is Harry's ever going to come back? But.
Yeah, you know, that, we get that question a lot. We actually, almost daily on our, on our, on our own social media there. And absolutely, yes, Harry's is excited to come back. When we do come back, it's going to be better than ever. It's going to be, it's going to be really exciting. I wish I had some pictures to share with you today. But I don't, but, but we've been, we've been doing some remodeling in there. It's, I really like the way it's coming out. We've improved some of the, we've not improved, but repaired some of the infrastructure, some of the things that you would just never get to work on because Harry's is 24/7, you know, 365. There, there's actually even, even when Harry's was open full schedule, there was scarcely two hours go by that somebody wasn't there doing something. Because if it wasn't, you know, the regular crew open from 10 AM in the morning till 2 AM the next day, it was the cleanup crew coming in at 4 AM. And so there was almost always somebody there at, at Harry's and you just couldn't, couldn't tackle some of these, these big improvements and overhauls. And COVID-19 has allowed us to tackle some of those things. So we're pretty excited to get it open again when, when the time comes.
And you guys have done live streaming so, for, for music a few times. So you, you, I think you guys kind of led that with live streaming some of the bands and trying to help the bands out and.
Right.
They've really taken, taken a beating also throughout this.
Yeah. And, and I know that we've kind of backed off on the live streaming here lately, but, but I think it's, it's about time to bring that back and, and get, get the bands some exposure and, you know, just, just kind of get everybody stoked for, for better times when, you know, hopefully, like I say, hopefully soon we'll get to get our outdoor venues back and, and we'll, if we get some good weather and some tourists, we'll, we'll open Harry's Corral again.
All right. Sounds good.
We'll be counting the days.
On the days. After January, that is.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Next week is going to be nice and warm next week. So maybe we should do a little trial.
Oh.
We're, we're talking about a Super Bowl. So we're talking about, if, yeah.
That's, yeah. And I don't have any, any indication that we will be, you know, allowed to open by Super Bowl, but, but we're keeping our fingers crossed that, that hopefully by Super Bowl weekend, and I'm told that that's February 7. You know, if the weather cooperates and the state says it's, if the ABC says it's okay, then we'd love to have Harry's Corral open for Super Bowl.
Come on. That would be super cool.
All right.
Crossed. Thank you so much, Mike, for joining us today.
Thanks, everybody.
Welcome to our, we're happy to have you.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here. Okay, I'm going to sign off then.
Bye bye.
Stop to cook.
Awesome.
Okay. So you want to introduce the next?
Valerie and I do that often. We, we talk at the same time. So, well, how. So, well, how about if we go to Judy Cotta next? Judy, tell us about Judy. And for those people that don't know, Judy Cotta is our new secretary extraordinaire.
Treasure, so she took Jeanette's seat, so.
Yes, just Jeanette moved over to a big seat.
We've been in Pismo for, well, we had our home here for about eight years now. And living here since two thousand and eighteen, when I retired, when Mike and I both retired. And from the valley, Visalia, where I was in healthcare. For, working for the hospital, Quea Delta Medical Center and for thirty-five years. And healthcare was certainly my passion, serving people in the community. And I moved over here after we retired and was getting used to retirement. And then while serving people in, in my community was again my passion. I just felt the need to, to do something else and, and these lovely ladies recruited me to. To serve on the chamber and I've always been involved with my local community. So it's been a good fit and I've just really been enjoying it. And I just really want to help the business community and, and provide service where I can. And looking forward to serving on this board and working closely with the city council and the, in the city of Pismo. And the business community to grow their businesses and provide support where we can.
Well, Judy, I for one, I'm really excited that you said yes to coming on to the board and I'm so happy to have you. So, and I, I, I believe that everybody is so far, that you've just been a great help so far.
Absolutely. Well, I was one of those people in the beginning that was kind of like, well, we have to kind of see because people want to become directors. And then they don't do anything and, you know, and we need people that are actually working. We need, we need things done. And so.
I kept saying, no, she's that girl.
Once I called Judy and she's like, yeah, I'll come in tomorrow morning and what, what time can I be there at eight o'clock? And I'm like, I'm not a morning person, so I'm like, let me have Jeanette meet you over there.
Valerie's like, can I see you at noon?
Well, I was a ten to twelve hour day person at the, at my job, so I used to.
No, you, you, you have been great and every day. Come into the office, she's there. Willing to help. She's getting us finally heat in our offices, like, you know, all of these things that we really haven't had much time to do. She's helping with our aging and, and working with Jeanette closely because it's, it's a lot, you know, it, it is a lot. So we appreciate you very much that you're, you're taking on such a, a big role. And, but you're very active and you're willing to do it.
Pismo's a wonderful community to be part of and I'm looking forward to continuing. Seeing it grow and, you know, to flourish.
And, and Mike, you know, it's kind of like a twofer for us because he's, this is great. You know, I was telling Shelley, I think, when I went out and talked to Shelley and I'm like, you know, anytime we can get a husband-wife team. It works out really well.
Even if he doesn't know that he's part of the team.
Yes, he is. He is definitely part of the team.
Mike is totally, yeah, Mike is totally, your husband, we gotta still work on, but.
He's in, I already said he is.
I, I figured once he offered the car for the, for Santa Express, so that was kind of like, you know, initiation, I guess, so.
He's been coming out to our beach cleanups since May. He's out there every Sunday. When we had our board retreat, he was actually nice enough to take all my pickers and gloves and, and get everything back. And so he's, he's been really helpful to.
You don't meet people like that very often that are just so giving and just care. And it's just, so we're so happy that you guys are working with us and.
Well, we feel very blessed to be here in Pismo.
Very grateful, so thank you, Judy. Appreciate it. And then we can move on to Shelley.
Shelley.
Hello, Shelley Van Roseboom. I love saying your name now.
I like that you can actually say it.
And so with the Cove.
Yeah, and we're, we're kind of two businesses, Cove and Van Rose Materials, and which I've had Van Rose Materials now for eleven years. But basically, we've been here five and a half years now. When I moved up here, and I felt a little bit, we came from like the Seal Beach area in, in Orange County. And my husband's originally from Fresno, so he has a big connection here. And we had vacationed here and I felt like this was a little Seal Beach before it became Seal Beach. And it's, it's a little gem and I really saw this lack of like shopping. That's really what it was. I was like, we live at the beach, why is there no place that looks like the beach? And we're a surfing family and we love being at the ocean. And so my, my normal, the way I like to decorate is definitely very coastal. So our shop definitely caters to the coastal community. We don't do just that, but that's kind of what, you know, that's what Cove is. Is, you know, a little of the coast, along with a little bit of the farmland and vines that surround us. And I'm really, you know, I wanted to be a part of the chamber because I'm, I'm new to this small business thing. My husband's the, the entrepreneur and has had a small business for years. I was a stay-at-home mom with my own little design company that I would do. And when I opened this up, whoo, I didn't know what I was getting into. It's been a lot of work, but I love it and didn't know that I had this thing in me that I, I didn't know I was a small business owner. I didn't know I had that energy. And now I see what other businesses go through and how hard this is. And I just want to help people. I want to get out there and be a cheerleader for other businesses. And because I live here as well, I don't want this just to be a place that has businesses for tourists. I want this to be a, a, a community full of, of businesses that help our, our locals and our tourists. And so, you know, I, I eat here, I shop here, I do business here. So I want our businesses to do well and I want good businesses, so, yeah.
And Shelley has also jumped in both feet and is assisting us with marketing now. And willing to help wherever we need help. And, you know, it's just, those are the kinds of things where, you know, just to remind everybody, we're, we're all volunteers. We, we have, you know, that's how we operate. So to get those of you that are willing to do that and work with us and, and get a system down as we go. Is, is just a huge help. It's a great help. And so tell, if you can let everybody know a little bit more about your location. And what kind of services you offer and what kind of merchandise and all of that.
So we're at Eighty Price Street across from Giuseppe's. You can't miss us. When they are open, you sit across the street and you look right into our store. We're next to Wildflower. We're, we're between a great clothing store behind me and a great wine place that way.
Perfect.
And we sell upholstered furniture and we have sofas, couches, our, our chairs, beds. We have rugs, we have lighting, we do full kitchen remodels, full bathroom models. Basically, anything for your house, we can do it. It is my passion and I love it.
Beautiful stuff.
My favorite store.
And actually, that's how I know Judy is because Judy and her little group of friends were our first loyal customers. And we fell in love with her. She's like my aunt. I mean, that's really what it is. She's family.
Like family.
And we found out she knew my father-in-law. I didn't, it's just amazing. I don't know. It's weird how everything connects.
You were telling me that.
Small world.
So you work with both residential and commercial?
Yeah, so commercials been new, but yeah, we've done some car dealerships. I've done some restaurants now. And yeah, so commercials starting to kind of ramp up, which is fun because my background is in hospitality and restaurants. So that's kind of a passion of mine, so.
Good to know, okay. So we'll put your link in here too, so if anybody has any needs or wants to come and check you out.
Has some beautiful home decor stuff.
Oh, yeah.
If you, if people haven't been there, they definitely should. I, I have a, oh, what do you call that wood? Driftwood, heart. And a peace sign and the peace sign I have in my store and then the heart I actually have here. As you go into my master bedroom, the heart is over the door.
I love it.
Yeah, I love it.
You're the number one thing. And Shelley says all these hours she works, she brings it upon herself, okay? I can tell you firsthand, she loads her car with all the knickknacks in her store, brings them to your house. And then doesn't just drop them off, she puts them all on display.
Oh.
So she can take my ugly room and turn it into something beautiful. And then when people come over, we get all the credit for it. She's not just a store, you know what I mean? It's, it's an amazing service, amazing experience.
We need to have her do that to our, our dreaded chamber offices.
I can do what you already have too. I like doing that. Throw everything in a thing, I'll, I'll go through it and yeah, that's fun too, so.
Love it.
Yeah.
Cool, okay. Good to know, good to know. Well, thank you, Shelley.
Remodeling or redoing, Shelley's the girl to call.
Yeah, we're doing a ground-up construction right now and it's, it's turning out pretty amazing. Big challenge, but yeah.
How exciting.
Yeah.
That's gotta be fun. That's gotta be, yeah, super exciting to see like the end result.
It's not, it's, it's, it's rewarding though, but it's a lot of work.
Well, good for you. Well, welcome. And again, we're very happy to have you as a new director, so.
Happy to be here. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
And last but not least.
Our Jeanette. Jeanette came to us last year as our angel from, I don't know where, but I'll tell you.
Heaven maybe.
She did, yeah.
I get crazy.
Wait, or didn't you come from the valley area?
I guess I could be your angel from Fresno.
Also, look at all the people that we've gotten from that valley area. That's, that's awesome. But yes, Val, Jeanette, not Valerie, Jeanette came in and just, I don't know. But both Valerie and I were like, who is she? Where has she been? And what took us so long to find her because you really helped us out a lot last year. And so this year, Jeanette has moved into the vice chair position.
Yay.
And we couldn't be happier, Jeanette.
Super happy.
I, I am very, very excited. I hope, I have big shoes to fill, so hopefully I can fill those shoes.
You're gonna fill them just fine, girl. You know that, you know that.
You got it.
I think it was kind of a no-brainer to move into that seat. Well, the crazy thing is that, you know, I would say right before Judy and Judy was like, what? Two months before the whole transition?
Yeah.
Two, three months maybe and, and it was kind of like, I was having already stressed. Because I'm like, okay, who is going to be the vice chair? You know, is anyone else going to want that seat or nominate themselves for that seat? And, and if that was, if it was Jeanette, now I have nobody as treasurer or secretary and who, you know, it's like.
And then I said, Val, here's your slate. You're gonna move Jeanette over and you're gonna get Judy as the secretary treasurer. Both, both of you were made for those positions.
And it was all, it just all happened, you know, it was like perfect. So, so yeah, but Jeanette and I, I don't know, Jeanette, how long ago we really met? But I want to say like four years ago.
Yeah, about three, four years.
It was at my office, right? You came into my?
It was, so it was four years ago, yes.
Like four years ago, so it's the craziest thing that we reconnected a year ago, a little over a year ago.
Couple of years after that.
For coffee and you were the president, the center or at, at the Women's Network, Slow or?
Yes, I was the president of Slow Women's Network at that time.
And then we had her out to Taste of Pismo and I tell you, that's where she shined. And our whole board was like, who is this chick? We need her on our team. Like the next, the next like Monday or something, she sends us like this list of all the things we did well and all the things we need to work on at the event. And I'm like, whoa, I'm like, nobody does that. So immediately we knew that she was going to become a part of, of the board and, and did. And, and has held the secretary seat and the treasurer seat and now she's vice chair. So again, just everybody's roles are instrumental in making this, you know, a great board. And a great Chamber of Commerce. So I'm super excited for twenty twenty-one. But Jeanette, so talk a little bit about, I guess, your business, Be Connected Solutions. Because I know you've been getting very busy lately. You've been, things are taking off for you. So for you to even consider staying on the board, you know, we're thankful for. Because I know you're getting very busy with your, your work.
Yes, actually, I am the owner of Be Connected Business Solutions. I am a business consultant that specializes in business automation and organizing your business. So we build custom databases that can do just about anything that you need. From managing your client database, automating your sales processes. I have a development team that is so extraordinary. They do things and I'm like, we can do that, really? So anything that you can think of, we can pretty much help you bring forward. They also do custom apps, so we can help you if you're thinking, you know, I want to, I want to create an app. We can help you make that come to life. But my biggest thing is my background, I was in training and development for years in corporate America. And then I was also a sales manager. So when, and I, we did a lot, I worked for a marketing company, so we did advertising and marketing. So when I got, what's the word, reorganized out of corporate America. I decided that, you know what, I work really, really hard and might as well do it for myself. So that's when I started Be Connected Business Solutions. I actually relocated from the valley to Pismo or to the Rororanda area in two thousand and sixteen. So almost five years that I've been here.
Wow.
And when I first got here, I didn't know anybody, so I just started volunteering. And then I got to meet Val through, through business. We met each other. And then in getting involved with the Slow Women's Network, we reconnected again to make a partnership between the Pismo Chamber. And the Women's Network. And once that happened, I was like, Pismo Chamber, what are these people about? And I just really was impressed with the people. I loved the energy of the people that I met. And what they were doing for businesses really, really made a huge difference for, for the businesses and I wanted to be part of that. So like you said, Taste of Pismo, I was like, oh, you need to volunteer because I'm the person to volunteer for things. I'm, I'm that girl. I'm the volunteer. So it just, it was a great experience. Everybody, it was fun. It was just a lot of different things. And then after that, you guys had me. I was like, okay, I gotta be a part of this group. Here I am.
No, it, it was great. Can you give a couple of examples as far as clientele and, and what your services provide? I must, I'm thinking like real estate agents or, you know, insurance. And I'm thinking of people with big client lists, I guess.
Actually, yes, I have, oh gosh, it runs the gamut. I have real estate agents. I have, oh gosh, a virtual accounting company. So they do everything from your cloud-based accounting to taxes to just organize, not organizing. But helping you with all your financial things from that standpoint. Oh my gosh, what else? Lot of realtors. I do have a lot of realtors, mortgage banking.
Insurance agents, probably.
Agencies, I've got aircraft acquisition and sales. Kind of a combination of different things, marketing companies. I've actually worked with a lot of marketing companies to help them automate their onboarding processes.
Okay.
That makes a big difference too.
Nice. So if people want to get in touch with Jeanette and have that need, then that's what, we'll go ahead and put your link in there also. For your website, so.
Yeah, and what I do is I'll just sit down with the business and find out what it is that they need. For me, it's about finding the right solution for the business. It's not, you know, there's no specific database or company that I'm affiliated with. So if I just, my passion is just really helping find that perfect fit for the businesses. And just like with everything else I do, I'm a relationship person. So building that relationship with the business, helping them grow and just really going forward that way is kind of my niche, I guess.
Nice. Well, you've done a great job and like I said, I know things are going well for you, so.
Yes, excellent.
That's great, especially during the end of twenty twenty being a COVID year, so. So we're happy to have you in the chair seat. I couldn't be happier. And the board, I think the majority of the board felt the same way, so, so yay.
I am, I am happy to be here. I just, I have to say, this, this board of the Pismo Chamber. Has such a heart and they care so much about the businesses. And everything that they do, like you said, Val, we're all volunteers. And we do this because we have a passion for it and we love our community and we love our businesses. So I can't, you know, I just gotta be here.
Right, just makes sense, all the way, all the way around. Well, thank you. So, well, do we have any comments or questions or anything like that? So, uh, do we have any comments or questions or anything like that?
We don't have any questions or comments.
All right. So. So I have to ask, um, does anyone else, Lisa and I talked about our New Year's resolutions on, hopefully you saw our fun-filled New Year's, uh, year in review, which was a lot of fun. We, we both had a bottle of champagne each. But it was fun. And you have to just have fun with it. So, uh, can we kind of go around and, and see what anybody said as far as New Year's resolutions? And we can make them business resolutions if I'm sure that's a lot of what most of us did. So Scott, we're gonna start with you.
Honestly, my resolution was just more getting personal time and making sure I allot myself time to just check out, turn off everything and, you know, walk into the block and hang out the beach on a very regular basis.
A good one.
That is a good one. Especially now. You're gonna need it more than ever. And Ms. Judy.
Well, I'm going to be starting, um, to be a, a, you know, a home teacher for my granddaughter two days.
That's right. Yeah, that should be fun.
My, to tap patience with that for Tuesdays and Thursday. And then the other days is to, to dedicate my time to helping the chamber, um, you know, getting the tasks that I've been assigned to get them, you know, done and get organized and help the chamber become, you know, more successful. They're, um, you know, great, great organization and I want to see them continue to grow and succeed. And and that's going to be my business goal, I guess, for my retirement and, and, uh, you know, just balance the two.
How old is your granddaughter?
Uh, she is six and a half.
Great.
We've got, we've got this. We can do it.
Yeah. Have faith.
Yeah.
And then Shelley.
Oh, um, I think the biggest resolution I, I have is, well, I have two. I, I don't know if this is a goal or a resolution, but I need to hire two people. So, um, I need a design assistant and I need, um, uh, somebody else for the store possibly. So that's.
Oh, well, you heard that right here.
Yeah, um, I can't find anybody to hire. So if you have any design experience, yeah, come in.
Have you posted the positions? Where, where are you posting?
I had posted. I did it on, um, a couple of different sites. Oh, gosh. Indeed, uh, Craigslist. I've done it on Instagram, Facebook. Yeah, I'm getting people, but they're from out of the area, like, you know, five hours away.
Yeah.
This isn't virtual. This is. And also the biggest thing, and I'm, I know Scott can attest to this, is I gotta get my kid out of her bedroom and do stuff. I have an eighth grader and I work too much and I know that we need to get outside more together as a family. We need to get back in the water and start surfing more. And I keep complaining that it's too cold. I've got a four-three wet suit. I gotta get out there. So.
Good. I like it. Good. Motivation.
Yeah.
Jeanette.
I stopped making resolutions several years ago because I found by February, I was really just lying to myself. Every year set goals. Um, I set personal goals and I set business goals. So for personal goals, I just really want to focus on approaching life and approaching things from a positive light all the time. Just try to get rid of any negative thoughts. Lisa has taught me a lot because she's so kind and so gentle. So I want to be like Lisa. Continuing to ramp up business. Um, my goal is to continue to, um, secure international companies. So right now I have one. So my goal is one per quarter. That's all I need. Um, and work not only in the U S, but also outside of the U S with my business.
Nice.
Excellent.
Good job. Thank you.
Why you want to start doing international more?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's gonna leave us and go to Portugal.
You guys go once and you're gonna be like, why am I not living here?
We all know that though. We all know that's her end goal.
I love Spain, maybe Spain, but.
Yeah. You get there and we'll come visit. How's that?
I love it. I'll show you around.
Not too soon though.
I know.
I need you. I need you.
Not for a couple of years, right, Jeanette?
I think at least five.
Okay, good.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we, we're good. We're good. We're good on that. Awesome. Okay. Well, this was great. And, uh, Lisa.
Yes.
If you want to close on a couple of things that, uh, we should probably note that we're also working on. Um, and I'll reconnect with, with the rest of the directors, but for something for Valentine's Day weekend. We're looking to put together a fundraiser of some sort since we can't do our wine walk. So we're coming up with ideas and something fun that will potentially be virtual. Um, so stay tuned for that. And then we did just, I know a lot of people, if there's any one event that people are looking at us for is Taste of Pismo Beach. And we have since moved that to August. And we will update the date on our website and on our Facebook page this week to reflect the correct date for our Taste of Pismo. But we will move forward with that this year. And I would expect that all of this COVID stuff will be in a much better place or hopefully non-existent. Um, we can still be hopeful. And we are still moving forward with our farmer's market, which should come in March. March third. So we're moving forward on that. We are going to start scheduling, uh, if not virtual mixers, uh, mixers as soon as we can. We will start relaunching our ribbon cuttings. So we have a lot of work ahead of us. But be sure to follow our Instagram and our Facebook page and check in on our website so that you, um, can be informed of everything. And anyone else out there likes, you know, Scott was talking about is just staying connected as a community, especially if you're here in this area. Um, to go to the city of Pismo Beach website, you can actually sign up for various agendas and topics. They'll send you email notifications. They will send you text message notifications. And we're doing a better job of getting that out to our business community so that we're not missing a beat anymore when it comes to those meetings. So we, the Pismo Chamber of Commerce should have some representation on each of those meetings. And those are the first and the second, no, first and third Tuesday, right, Scott? At five thirty?
You know, also what people might not know is there is a, uh, Pismo app that you can put on your phone, which is.
Oh, that's right.
And I have that app on my phone and it will take you right to any city council meetings. Anything that's going on with the city is right on that app. So it's a good app to have on your phone. And that's.
Okay, so, uh, for us, it's a matter of, you know, our job is to try to keep the business community as informed as possible. We do that through our newsletter. We do that through our Beach Communities Facebook page. Um, occasionally you'll see some of us walking downtown, talking to businesses. You know, we're not shy when it comes to that. Um, and we're posting on a very regular basis on our social media outlets. So we're, we're, again, we're trying to keep the business community as informed as possible of everything that's going on so that they can say that they have been informed. And if you are interested in becoming a member of the Pismo Beach Chamber of Commerce, we actually have a fifty percent off through the end of January. So now would be the time, which will put, I think in most cases, it's like a hundred bucks. We're, we're also waiving the thirty-five dollar processing fee right now. So I encourage you, just like all, everybody here today, you know, we're working together. There's a lot of things that we need to put in motion this year. We are being heard by the city. We have a direct relationship with the city. Lisa and I are continuing our meetings with Jim Lewis every other, or every second Tuesday. So next Tuesday, we'll be meeting with Jim. Um, so those kinds of things are important. So if you're out there and you're frustrated with absolutely anything, then let us know and we're happy to, uh, have the conversation with people like Scott or you know, any other city council for that matter, or even Jim, depending on what that topic is. So, um, we just want to remind you all what we're here to do and what we will continue doing moving forward into twenty twenty-one. And we have a phenomenal board of directors this year here to serve you.
We do. And even besides the businesses, even residents can join the Pismo Beach Chamber of Commerce as a resident. And then you'll be up to date on all the information when we are able to have mixers. There's going to be a private mixer for just the residents. Um, you'll be able to get discount on any events that we're doing like Taste of Pismo. So there's a lot of great things for residents to also become a member. And I believe it's fifty dollars for a resident, but right now it's twenty-five dollars for the whole year. So as a resident, you can join.
I gotta correct you, Lisa. It's normally a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a citizen membership. So it's fifty dollars.
I knew that. Fifty dollars in my head. Race, erase, erase what I just said.
It's all good. But.
And he's like, wait a minute, Mike and I just joined and it was fifty dollars.
But we have a good time. We conduct business, but we definitely are a fun chamber. We have to keep it light. We have to smile. We have to just, you know, roll with the punches and make the best of whatever presents itself. So, and I think we have all learned that and then some during twenty twenty.
Indeed.
Right?
Yes. I was just at a, at a downtown meeting yesterday with a couple of businesses at eight o'clock in the morning and they were all so thankful that, that I showed up. And it's like, of course I'm gonna show up. You, you guys have a situation and and you need our help. And of course I'm going to be here for you guys. So I, I hope everybody realizes that the chamber is out there to be the voice for them um, and be the vo- voice for the, to the city for them. If they don't feel comfortable calling the city on different issues, um, that's what we do. So.
And we'll even mediate, you know, we'll mediate between neighbors and try to come up with solutions. I mean, you know, we're, we're doing everything that we can. So, um, all right. So, Lisa, in closing.
Um, thank you, everybody for being on today. We really appreciate your time. And don't forget, every Sunday at eight o'clock in the morning, you will find me at the Pier Plaza. I have pickers, I have masks, I have gloves. I even had to get a new box of medium gloves for the ladies. Um, so we have it all out there. Come and join us and help clean up our city and keep our beaches clean. So I thank everybody that comes out there and our sponsors, which are Splash Cafe, Cool Cats and Beach and Biscuits.
And thank you so much, Lisa, for continuing those efforts. Everybody appreciates it.
I love it. It's, it's a great way to start a Sunday and it's always so beautiful out there.
Of course. We're in Pismo Dice.
I know, right?
All right, everybody. Have a good.